And after the pledge, I ask that everyone remain standing and join me in a moment of silence. Mike Masea, our graduate, passed away this weekend. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic, which is the nation, under God, indivisible, and every being and justice for all. Thank you. Couple of changes on the agenda. Number four on the agenda, the public hearing for the public hearing for Dakota Fonda is being rescheduled for our next meeting. And number nine on the agenda is also being rescheduled for our next meeting. Three B on the agenda is the superintendent's update. Dr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mrs. Barshay. Just a quick update, we have the fall high school sports began this week. It's great to have the students back. Little fields. Eagles media competition next week in football, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls volleyball, cross-country, gymnastics, golf, swimming, cheerleading, and then girls tennis. And so it's just great to have the students back, the athletes back, and get back to normal as much as we can. And that'll be the theme this year.
Thank you. Number five on the agenda, five C is the adoption of minutes from the special meeting of August tenth, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Portmire with the motion, do I have a second? Mr. Skrito with a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Questions and comments concerning tonight's agenda only? Do any members have items that they'd like to have removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Skrito?
Seven point two eight five, just.
Seven point two eight five as to Ashley Skrito?
Yes.
And I will remove seven point two B one as to Ms. Bento. Any others, any other items? With that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, less seven point two A five and seven point two B one. Thank you, Mr. Skrito. Mr. Portmire, with a second. All those in favor? Seven zero. Seven point two A five, I'll make the motion, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Portmire, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Seven point two B one. I six zero one, Mr. Skrito abstaining, my apologies. Seven point two B one, do I have a motion, Mr. Skrito? Thank you, do I have a second, Mr. Kylie, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, abstentions? Motion passes five zero two, Mr. Barshay and Mr. Kylie abstaining. Number eight on the agenda, policies there aren't on today, number nine is to take off the agenda, number ten is resolution concerning a referendum vote to be held in October. Do I have a motion to authorize the clerk to publish notices and adopt the resolution as set forth in the minutes Mr. Skrito makes a motion? I will second, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Committee reports there aren't on today, discussion matters there aren't on new business, do any members have new business? Yep, Mr. Skrito?
Dr. Murphy, how we doing with the middle section, almost done, right?
Yes, Mr. Rizani provided an update, some pictures this week, they got a tremendous amount of work done with the payment and we are on target to be finished by the start of year.
Thank you, Dr. Crafton. Along those same lines, any of the summer projects, everything else is completed or near completion, anything else to be concerned about?
No, not at this time, so each project is at some stage of completion, but we are confident that all of the projects going on now will be done in time, which could mean that we're late hours on weekends, but it will be finished.
Any other new business? Any new business from administration?
Not at this time.
Before we get to questions and comments from the community, we did sort of send out a survey last week, we have the data, do we have a slide for that? Dr. Murphy? Yeah, why don't we? Don, I could just read it if you want.
If you'd like to get this queued while you read?
Sure, so the results of the survey that we sent out to the community, the first question was concerning whether masks should be worn in school, we had a little over two thousand responses. Fifty-three point seven one responded that masks should be worn. Forty-six point two nine responded that masks are not needed or should be optional, rather. The number of people that stated that they would homeschool their kids if we did not follow, or if we did follow the mask mandate, eighteen point eight nine percent said they would, eighty-one point one one percent said they would not. The number of, well, the percentage of people that said they would homeschool their kids if we did not follow a mask mandate, twenty point two three percent said they would, seventy-nine point seven seven percent said they would not. Eighty-one percent agreed that the district should continue to advocate for local control. Eighteen point five one percent disagreed with that. And seventy-three percent of people said that the district should follow of the agencies presented, should follow one of the, one of the agencies presented, should follow that guidance, while twenty-three percent said that we should not follow guidance from American Academy of Pediatrics, Center for Disease Control, New York State Education Department, the District Physician, and Sub-County Department of Health, of those entities.
Oh, that's why.
The Sub-County Department of Health was overwhelmingly the entity chosen by people as to which one the district should follow, if we follow any agency. Well, so there's a graphical view, I don't know if anyone can see that, can you take us through that really quick, Dr. Murphy?
So that slide reflects your first data point, which shows fifty-three percent change agreeing with Stanford Children's Hospital masks. Forty-six, forty-seven percent disagree. I believe in local control. Eighty-one percent agree with local control. Eighty percent change disagree. And then the summary of the last question, which is, should we which of the agencies or professionals should we follow, I believe it's seventy percent, am I correct?
Seventy.
Seventy-four percent and twenty-seven percent, twenty-six percent disagree, the chart on the right. Twenty-six percent say we should follow any of them, the chart on the right provides that breakdown.
So questions and comments from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? We're going to limit comments to five minutes per person tonight. If you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, tell us your name and you'll have the floor. I ask that people be respectful to each other, let people talk, no matter what their opinion is, and everyone will have their turn to be heard if they wish. Would anyone like to make any questions or comments?
How you doing, Frank Nola? First of all, I don't believe fifty-three percent buy ass, that's a silly even dunk in Wisconsin and we all know that BS. Second of all, why are you in mass, you weren't in mass two weeks ago, now you're in a mass, why are you in a mass now? Why, none of you were in mass two weeks ago. Now you're in mass?
You gotta know, you're a big tough guy, my mom is in town.
Who are you, you seem to be a tough guy, I can't see you have a mask. Now you're in a mask, you're the one who believes it, the other rest of you didn't have a mask. Why all of a sudden now you're in a mask? I am a tough guy, you step outside.
All right, all right.
Anyway.
Mr. Nola?
Explain to me, if you guys came out.
Ms. Gosworth?
If you guys came out today and said we're not doing masks, what would happen, what would they do to you? What would they do to you?
What would they do to us?
What would the state do to you? Could they go rescue? Could they take your house?
They could remove board members, they could remove the superintendent, they could take away state aid, they could close the schools.
They would close the school, you think, you asked me, you asked me a question after what they could do. You think they're really gonna send the National Guard to close the school? You know they're not gonna do it, let me ask you another question.
Do you want me to respond or you just want to keep asking questions?
Don't be asking, I got five minutes. Let me ask you something.
So you don't want me to respond?
I don't believe, now if they say teach CRT, we're gonna do the same thing, are you gonna cave to that too? What if they tell you the same thing?
So with last week, you gonna let me answer this now?
Please answer.
Last week, we made clear that the board will not, well, these board members will not institute the CRT.
What if they say they're closing the school, cut the state aid, cut the board?
I wouldn't be the one up here, you'd have to ask someone else, because I wouldn't do it.
You wouldn't do it?
I would not do it.
Masks, CRT is where you draw the line, but putting masks on.
Well, I draw the line at a bunch of different things.
Putting masks on kindergarten, you're okay with it.
If you're asking me questions, I'm gonna respond to you, but if you keep cutting me off, I won't.
Well, ask the question, you're okay with putting six-year-olds in masks, you're okay with that?
I am personally okay with that, yes.
Well, this is why this board has no guts, I'll just say a closer for one thing.
Good.
The ironic thing in HOPH, you know, for classes this year, you're gonna be teaching kids about the American Revolution, where diets is written of their death, bankruptcy, of their whole family annihilation, the stand-up against injustice and BS like this. You'll be teaching them that while you got them six feet apart wearing masks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Reinstain, I just moved to this district. I moved here from New York City, particularly to escape the mask mandates and the restrictions in New York City, I actually thought here was much for your place, but maybe it's wrong, I don't know. Anyway, I just want to say that everyone here believes that masking made the difference whether they get the virus or not, or the European CDC seems to disagree, and they are just as much a public health agency as the American CDC. The European CDC says the data on cloth masking is quote scarce. Go to their website, you will see it for yourself, scarce. They also say, the European CDC says, do not put a mask on anyone under the age of twelve. And you know what? European countries that do not mask children are fine. They are fine, the children are okay. In the UK, they had a major Delta variant wave, a major wave, those children did not wear a mask at all, okay? They never put a mask on anyone under the age of twelve, and you know what? The kids were fine. Unless American children are mutants, I assume not. Or alternatively, if there really is such a terrible hospital wave of American children, but there wasn't in the UK and there still is, isn't it? I must wonder if the mask is what is the cause of the American child hospital wave. And note, and note, there was actually a study done from Professor Tracy Oster at Brown University, and she compared the rate of COVID between schools that had the mask and schools that didn't have the mask. And you know what they found? They found that the maskless schools, or should I say mask mandate that schools, performed better, that those students actually were less likely to come down with COVID. So I ask you, considering all this data and the extreme paucity of data from the CDC showing that masking is beneficial, they cited two hairdressers in Missouri as the top evidence of masking working in Sapporo. Considering all this hard data that I have cited, why would you, with all this accretion that a child is committing at age five, ever believe that masking a child's kindergarten year would ever be beneficial, we're the only ones doing it, Europe doesn't do it, why would be beneficial? Why? What is the logic?
Well, I think you're asking the wrong question, with all due respect.
Yeah.
The question, I'll, hang on, the question is not whether we individually believe that kids should be wearing masks or not, the question is much more simple, unfortunately for us, which is, do we follow a mandate or do we not? That's all. Our individual, our individual beliefs as to whether kids should wear masks in schools vary, okay, but that doesn't matter. What matters is, we have a mandate, there are threats as to what happens if you violate the mandate, and do we believe as a district that it's in the best interest of all four thousand kids to violate the mandate? That's all.
Okay, so as far as the mandate goes, I have a comment about the mandate, a couple of comments. Comment one, it is my understanding that there's no longer a state of emergency in New York, and that is the reason why Cuomo said that there was no legal ability to enforce a mandate. So how did Matthew Walsh provide the legal authority to give it? She's not, she won't be violating the law and enforcing a mandate, because she is claiming the Department of Health has unilateral authority to enforce a mask mandate. Where did the Department of Health get that authority? There's something called the Administrative Procedure Act, they need to follow the Administrative Procedure Act, they're not following it, they're violating the law if they are to in fact enforce the mandate. So all I'm saying is, you have another option, which is to actually push the legal option and to basically defend it in court. There's not an, you don't have to just assume that this is going to pass legal muster, because I don't think it will. And considering all the data from Europe that I have mentioned, there's all that health data to show it's not necessary, number one, and then they didn't follow the actual legal procedures, number two. And then the third point I want to mention is that all the schools in Florida, Texas, they ignore the governor mandates, they just institute, they institute mask mandates against the governor's laws there, and somehow that's okay. Somehow they're getting away with that, so why is it only in one direction? And especially considering the paucity of data to show that child masking is beneficial. And that is my comment, and I wish you all good evening.
Thank you, thank you. Jean?
Yes?
We spoke about this two weeks ago, and you said to me, sue for what? Is there any legal grounds for the district to sue at this point in time?
Well, there's nothing at this point, all we have right now, Governor's press conference at about three thirty, seven o'clock, and she said that she is quote immediately directing the Department of Health institute universal masking for anyone entering our schools, that's the exact quote from the governor at the press conference. However, I've not seen a piece of paper since three thirty before this afternoon. In the past, with Governor Cuomo issuing executive orders, we was watching the press conferences and waited for a piece of paper that says, you know, exactly what he intended to say. So I don't know, I'm giving documents or any documents of whether the government can do this, whether the Commission of Health can do this, I don't have those answers, you know, because it's why the piece of paper that has the direction, something that I can analyze, I can't render that opinion. But right now, no one, not formally sent to school districts or anyone else in terms of these papers, it's the press conferences. So there's no, I don't think anyone right now has standing to sue over anything, we don't know what piece of paper, executive order, the direction Department of Health, Commission of Health says, because it hasn't been, I.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Laura Bell, I have two children in the district, I don't normally come to these things, because to me, we have how many kids in this district?
About four thousand.
And this is what shows up, it's really sad. I'm sorry, it's sad, these are the only people I care for, they're children. I care about my children, okay? I had some guy thrown out of McDonald's because he disrespected my kid the other day. I have to stand up for my kids. How many, we had no mask mandates in summer school, correct? Kids did not come, it was optional, kids wanted to come, did we have a case that came out of school? All of a sudden now, the new mayor, which is probably gonna be worse than the old one, if that's even possible, is saying there's a mask mandate. From what proof, okay? Teachers are being mandated to get vaccines, if they don't get vaccines, they're mandated to take a test. They can get COVID just as much as I can, so why are they getting tested but not the ones that are vaccinated? It makes absolutely no sense. Twenty nineteen, common sense went out the window when COVID stepped in. It's stupid. I'm sorry, my children did not go to school for the last month because this building on the third floor is so high. My kid came home with a soaking wet mask, sweating and slept for three hours. I'm not gonna torture my child, I'm not. It's stupid, camps, sports, everything, no cases. Long Island, okay, you're going by who's tested versus who's positive, not the population. I had COVID, I lost someone who's from COVID, I bought every element of this whole spectrum, this is insanity. Half of you are wearing masks, half of you aren't. I don't care if you want to wear one or not, but give it to us to choose, just like you guys had a choice, to choose. Half the people from Long Island, Nashville and Suffolk, I'm doing it, I'm not, I am, I'm not. Why don't we all get together as a community on Long Island and say, you know what, we're standing up to these people. I don't care that someone in the, in the supermarket is wearing ten masks, good for them, I don't care, I'm gonna walk by and do my thing and go my way. It just doesn't make sense, absolutely zero sense, and I'm not gonna stand for it. And if you guys are gonna mandate my child to wear a mask, you're gonna give it everything.
Wrong comment, we're not mandating this, we're not mandating.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, absolutely, absolutely, some account, I'm sorry, some account, if they're gonna do it, then why should I pay for a mask? Let the state pay for it and then send it to you. It, I've done it for a year, I've done it, I've complied, I did everything that we're supposed to do. It's time to stop. It is, I'm sorry, it's time to stop, that's all.
I think I made a comment, may I, may I, may I, audience, that the majority of us are aligned with you guys, and there should not be.
But nobody's standing up for it.
This, okay, okay, you let me finish. Ma'am, ma'am, if you want to come back up to the mic, you have about another thirty seconds on your time, that's fine, but you can't yell in the back of the room. Dr. Crafton, you done? The one comment you made at the end I agree with, this is not going to begin and end and be resolved with our HOPH Board of Deputies. So somehow, some way, and I'll tell you right now, and this is not a knock on Dr. Murphy, you're not gonna get all the superintendents to get all the districts aligned and fight this. Their charge is to educate the kids, and if they have a path to do it, and they're told by the governor they have to do with masks, that's what they're gonna follow, okay? So, yes, us, the community members, right, not boards of ed, the community, everyone that lives along Island needs to get together and do something, and they believe that's right. So, so before we get into ninety different stories about how my kid felt, your kid felt, we could all have those stories, I think we need to direct the rest of the comments and the focus on something, you know, constructive, where how are we gonna solve it? Yelling at us is not going to solve it. We can't shut the schools down, they'll remove us, fine, then you can run for the board, you know what, they'll remove you too. That's not the answer to this, so we have to be logical about it, stop yelling at each other.
But that's why we have attorneys, they're not gonna come to the door and close it, okay, then the attorney solved it, we paid the taxes. You think the community is gonna go, I can't go to school? They're not. They're not.
Anyone else who'd like to be heard? Yes?
Hello again.
Hello again.
James Manners, just want to state again for the record, I have three children, two of seven, one of two years old. They wear masks, no problem. I think there's not enough parents that are saying that, that they can wear them all day long, no problem if you don't make any challenge. As far as the comments about, you know, what the health, what really what the science says, I was actually just reading the European CDC site, they do recommend masks for children. That was before Delta came out and realized that children are being affected much more. And that really just brings me to the point of, what are we really talking about here? You know, we're debating the concern of what's the third and super second most common cause of death in this country. And, you know, I've been touched by this personally, I've lost a few people, I actually have, if you don't compromise people that are battling cancer right now, that I have, just being here right now is a concern to me, to then go back and be around them, even though I'm vaccinated. So, you know, we say we don't want to go virtual again, we see what happens down south, right now there's tens of thousands of kids that are home quarantined because they prioritize choice, personal choice over public health. That's not good for any of those kids, for them to be home right now and not receiving an education, receiving.
This is the vast question.
So we know what's gonna happen, you know, even worse than not getting an education, a certain percentage of the families here, whether it be children, parents, grandparents, they're gonna be hospitalized, they're gonna be ICU, and some people are going to die. And for us to put the inconvenience of wearing a mask higher than that, just doesn't make any sense to me. And I understand right now the governor's making a mandate, and the reason I'm speaking right now is it goes beyond just the school, it goes for our whole community and how we just conduct ourselves, we need to prioritize our communities.
Thank you. Guys, guys, if we're gonna have a civil discourse, or we're not gonna have any.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, this is like completely out of my comfort zone, so for me to be out here is very, um, my children decided. My children literally thanked me for fighting for them.
Did you say your name, Lola?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm named Jackie Martinez, I have three children in the district, we've been in the district for ten, ten years, so it's our tenth year. I have a girl, a daughter, both senior here, I have a third grader and a first grader. I'm not gonna get into our whole story, but we homeschooled last year. My, my senior, I let her say, say, okay, do you want to wear a mask, it's up to you, you're sixteen years old. Yes, she wants to be in school with her friends and wear the mask. Yes, she wants to be in school with her friends and wear the mask. I sent my seventh grader at the time, I sent her in. I know she's not going to miss out on things. So I sent her in, and by October, I pulled her out. She was crying badly, she had, and she, the state's guards went in, it was a nightmare. She was, please keep me home, please keep me home, and I'll show you. This is a picture she drew forty-five weeks ago. Nobody's still talking about this. Forty-five weeks ago. Forty-five weeks ago, she took that picture. And it's still happening. Um, my little one, she just kindergarten. Because I wasn't having, sending her to kindergarten with masks on her face and not having circle time and all that stuff. So I kept her home virtual, and guess what? Virtual doesn't work for kindergarten, it just doesn't. So I ended up homeschooling her as well. So I have to pull my children out, I can't go to work. So that puts pressure on my husband because I can't go to work, so now I'm homeschooling. I'm not a teacher, but it worked out. You know what, I think they're past where they would have been. But I just want to say, I know that your opinion doesn't matter on the mask, but how do people truly believe this thing is actually doing anything? It's not doing anything, it's not helping you, it's not protecting you in any way. I have— You go.
Jackie, just give me everything after, okay? Just give me everything after, and I'll make sure it gets distributed. Jack.
I just feel like moms are like just stuck. They don't want to put a mask on their kid. I know very, very few people that actually want to mask their children. It's the fact that they need to go to work and they're stuck, and it's not fair. It's just not fair. The kids went to camp all summer, all summer, they went unmasked, playing with everybody. Oh, my whole neighborhood is full of children. Right now, there's four of them on my trampoline. I mean, don't tell me insurance, but they're, they're, they're on top of each other in the pool. I mean, and now they're going to sit in a desk, wash their hands, and use sanitizer, which was ridiculous last year, by the way. I mean, who puts sanitizer in their hand and then goes wash their hands? I mean, that was the rule in the second grade classroom last year. So now people, you want them to sit there with a mask, only with a shield, which a virus can't get over the shield, I mean, really? So, I mean—
Children's supplies, what's the question?
None of, I mean, none of this makes sense. None of this makes sense. I mean, that's what put my daughter over. She, she's, it looks like, like it's claustrophobic. But, um, and just to let you know, if this, if this vaccine gets banned, then half the school is leaving. Half the school— Half the students, like so many parents that are putting up with this mask bullshit, it's not free bullshit. They're putting up with this, but they're not going to put poison in their bodies. They're not masking their children with some experimental shit. So I'm sorry, being— But I just want to know, what are you guys doing to help us get parent choice? I don't care if little Susie next to her is wearing a mask. Do I think she should? No. Like my daughter shouldn't have to wear one if I don't want her to. So what are you guys doing? You're saying all the superintendents are just going to just take, oh, okay, if you have to listen to the governor? That's not right. We can count on you guys to fight for us.
Unfortunately, I think that's what you can see, Jackie, is everyone is going to comply. Yeah, and then you'll have some districts that band together and challenge it. Uh, I hope we're one of them.
What are the problems with parent choice? I truly feel that it's those parents that want to mask their children are going to be upset because they're going to come home and say, why do I have to wear a mask and so and so doesn't? Because it's going to be like, oh, why, you know, they're going to be jealous that the other kid doesn't have to wear a mask. But that should, it shouldn't play into that, it should be about the science. The science, it doesn't reflect masking our children, all they want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Barney, and I hopefully have an incoming kindergartner this upcoming school year. Um, I want to address a couple of things. First, before anybody spoke, you sir said, let's keep it respectful. That's why we're here today, because respect amongst everyone in our community is gone. Someone over there said, when the first man was speaking, somebody over there said, how, what happened to personal choice? Again, that's why we're here. I don't care if somebody chooses to mask their child, mask themselves. What I choose to do as a person and as a parent should not have anything to do with anybody else. If masks worked, again, I don't see the issue. I just went out to the store, I picked up three different boxes. Flat out on the boxes says, does not protect against COVID-19. It's embedded on the box. And here we are, saying, you have to wear it, you have to wear it, protect against the deadliest virus. I really wish I had the picture that had painters have to wear these big rebreathers and respirators and all of this with the deadliest virus in history, the deadliest virus. A simple little paper mask is going to protect us? Our common sense people, it has to be elevated. Our, like, nobody uses common sense anymore, and that's what fathers say. I wasn't as passionate as I am, honestly, at this moment. I stayed off Facebook, I didn't say anything. And then I was fortunate because my children are young. I have a five-year-old and I have a now three-year-old. So all last year, they really didn't have to wear masks. The preschools didn't have to wear masks, they didn't have to do it. Whenever I had to go into a doctor's office, my daughter instant, almost instant say, two minutes, I can't breathe, she broke out into highs. She does have allergies, I'll give you that, but she's still forced to wear it because it's a public health concern. And here I am, telling my child that for the greater good, you need to suffer. No, everybody needs to have the parental choice. Now, you sir said, I'm sorry, I don't know anything about you. You sir said that most of you align with how we're feeling. So we want to know that you're going to help us. I want to be respectful, I want to help you, I want to give you all the tools that you need to fight for us.
So, you know what the biggest tool we need is? I don't know if it's happening, I hope it is. Yell at people that can actually make a difference. Yell at your local politicians. Lobby your local politician. Cretion the government.
Trust me when I say, I not only had myself, I got an employee, and we were calling all day today, we've been calling. So I have another—
That's the biggest, that's the biggest weapon, right?
I have another question, though.
Yeah. And I'm just going to ask you to finish up, okay?
That's fine. So one question was asked, that what is going to be done if you don't follow the mandate?
Yeah.
Can you answer that? So—
Well, I answered, I answered what we've been told.
To the best of your guess, okay. So my question is, if the outcome comes that the mandate is, so what happens to the school when we all pull our kids out?
No one knows the answer to that. No one knows the answer to that.
Well, that's where we're at, because honestly, that's where I'm—
Understood. Can we, please, go ahead.
My last statement, I know I'm going off. My last statement is, again, the reason I'm, most people saying, what's the problem? It's just a piece of paper over your mouth. That's where it starts. Right now, we're fighting a tyrannical government. It starts with the masks, and if you don't, if you comply with that, the vaccine's coming next. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Anyone else?
Alicia Stein, uh, we have two kids in the district. Ms. Varanki, I used to handle your account, uh, Westlaw. You were, I was your Westlaw rep.
Oh, really?
Yes, anyway.
Welcome back.
Uh, sign over there. Uh, so a couple of questions, right? And I'm not going to, you've seen my stuff, I've said you, right? You know, I feel about all this stuff. It's been very emotional last couple of days with this FDA group. Um, but a couple of questions I have. Do we know what the numbers are for flu cases versus COVID cases for children?
I don't, but in what context?
Well, because we never masked up our children during flu season, right? So now we're masking them up for COVID. Curious, we don't know those numbers. And why all of a sudden the change? Because the flu is actually, you know, as a physician, the flu is more deadly to children than COVID, right? So who are we really looking to protect here? Are we looking to protect the children? Are we looking to protect the staff, like? And I know that you guys had already put a plan in place, and then obviously something was kiboshed, because I assumed that was your, you were going to present to us a plan today, right? Of how we were going to approach the school opening. Did you have a plan?
Well, we're still, we were still waiting on what was coming from the government.
Okay, so we were—
The one, can I just jump in for a second? The one thing we wanted to avoid was what all these other districts did to grab headlines. We're not going to wear masks, we're going to have the parent choice. They did that until today, you understand that? We tried, very, it was a clever letter we wrote last year because the community asked us to, to say, you know what, we're not going to wear masks until you maybe just chose science that says we need to. And they didn't, they turned around and said, okay, you can't graduate, you see, we're going to shut you down in two weeks to go. So we've tried, we're up here for you guys, we're not up here for each other or, you know, ourselves, but, uh, I mean—
So you guys do represent the parents and students at school, right?
Of course.
Okay. So, our attorney over there, who is he representing? Is he representing the district? Are you representing the district or you representing the parents?
He represents the Board of Education, that's correct.
Which is us.
Which is us, which is your representatives.
Okay, so if, I'm, I'm, you know, fine for masks, okay? Uh, hopefully maybe we can have lots of mask breaks for the children. What's going to happen when this vaccine comes? Because it's coming.
No one knows.
It's, in fact, it may come in a few months, you know, for the sixteen-year-olds.
Yeah.
It may, it may be forced upon us. Um, I, people are comfortable vaccinating their children. I'm sorry, the jury's still out of the long-term effects of this vaccine, and I certainly do not want to use my child as a test subject for the vaccine. We don't mandate the flu, right? We don't mandate the flu, even though that's more deadly to the children. But we're going to try to, I'm seeing it, I see the writing on the wall, this is coming. What are you going to do to represent us?
See, that's, that's the one thing I mentioned before, the Board of Ed, we have limited power with that.
I know, I understand.
We have to represent each other. In fact, you can't come to the Board of Ed and have us, unless, we're going to be here trying to support what the community wants.
Right.
It's not going to begin and end with a Board of Ed. That's, that's what I think the mistake is for some people, what they're thinking is. Everybody needs, and I really think that will absolutely be a line in the sand. If they mandate the vaccine, you're going to see everyone go absolutely, I mean, everyone's going crazy now.
It's coming, it's coming.
I don't agree with that, but if it does come, I do agree with you that people will kind of lose it.
So, so then that goes to my next question. If we decide, how much of each student worth to the district? I know you said it weeks ago, you know, it's very common.
Hang on, what is, what is that? What we spend on each student?
No, each student is worth, what, twenty-three thousand?
Twenty-seven.
Doesn't work that way.
Okay, so if, if, if we all pull our children out, does that affect—
I mean, you're referring to per people spending, you're, you're able—
It's what we spend on each student, which is about what the number each says. We don't get money for each student.
I'm, okay, that's, okay. So that it doesn't impact you at all if we pull our kids, how people done, it doesn't impact the school?
Financially, no, but bad for the district, of course, but no.
All right, so it's good to know, I thought maybe it did impact you. And my next question is, how much money did the school, um, get from the government for COVID? Like, the plexiglass and the ma, you know, the mask, the cleaning supplies? How much, how much of that was for, for COVID, related to COVID?
I don't know, we received some funding last year, I have to look up exactly what that is. There's NUC funds, SERSA, then ARD funds, which total close to four million dollars.
Okay, so, so really, if we decided not to send our kid into school with a mask, you guys would have to apply the mask, right?
When you say you guys, you're talking about, you're talking about the taxpayers?
No, the school.
Well, the school, the school doesn't make its own revenue, right? We get paid by the—
But you receive four million dollars.
Yeah, there's grants and there's revenue from, from taxpayers, that's it. So if you're asking me whether the district would have to pay for masks or not, I would assume, yes, that's taxpayer money.
That would not come out of the four million. It was granted for COVID.
We'd make that decision if we had to, but we would have the means. We've had masks on hands last year as well.
Okay. Okay, and who's going to be paying for the test if the teachers are told they have to be vaccinated? And then we have to test them weekly like they're doing in New York City, who pays for that?
That's an open question. New York City, Mayor DeWaz, who announced he's negotiating teachers union as impacting the mandate. So that's an open question.
Okay. And now, but by the—
And that, that is, Alicia, that's the part that Governor said today, right?
I didn't listen.
Okay, so, a school employee, if you could read it, there is a mandate, sorry.
She also said, launching a back-to-school COVID testing program, they're testing for students. Instead of widely nailed, and, like, quote, only method, quote, require vaccines for all school personnel to have option to test out weekly, which at least will allow, that's the quote from the government.
So who's going to pay for that? For those that opt out, we don't know. It's an open issue.
And my last question, did we have camp programs in the schools?
Say it again.
Did we have camp programs in the schools this summer? Like, where students feed to the schools?
We, we had summer programs, yes.
Okay, do we know how many children that were in those programs caught COVID?
I cannot have that for you, but it was insignificant.
Okay.
It was insignificant.
All right, that's, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Yes. That's okay, take it, take it easy.
Jenny Minor, I have a tenth grader and a seventh grader.
Your first name, I'm sorry, Jenny?
Jenny, yeah. Um, thank you. My question is, last year, if a student tested positive in a classroom, that whole class was sent home and they had to quarantine for two weeks. What is the policy this year?
So our understanding of the Suffolk County Department of Health, I think there's no quarantining this year as long as kids are masked.
So this year, it's a guarantee, it's a policy, okay?
There's a, there's a little bit of nuance to it. It all comes down, it all comes down to what's, what is defined as a close contact. So according to Suffolk County Department of Health, if you are within six feet for fifteen minutes or more throughout the day, uh, then, then you'd be considered in close contact, but they give two lifelines. One is what Mr. Barshay said, which is if both children or the children are masked, then it's considered an exception to that rule. Another exception is vaccination status.
I don't know, you're like, that's completely silly.
I'm sorry?
I don't know what to say about that, but it sounds like—
But you're right, it was, at one point, it was the whole class, now it's much more prescribed.
I know it's not your rules, I mean, it's, during eating lunch, they don't have a mask on.
Well, during lunch, yes, so during lunch, we're, we're setting it up that students will have the proper social distance if they're more than six feet apart, then they don't, they don't, they get defined as a close contact.
And further—
If you're within six feet, then you're both uncomplicated enough.
So there will be no virtual learning this year, it's all—
We will have a dedicated, one option, that's fair. Our goal, the first question on the survey was, uh, do people agree that students should be onsite for in-person learning? That is our guiding light and mantra, we intend to have them in and keep them there.
I'm just concerned, last year, they had quarantine, this year they don't have to.
Yeah, well, it doesn't mean that there won't be any quarantine, we're not sure what to expect yet, right?
So what happens if they—
We're trying to, we're trying to mitigate quarantine possibilities because we want to be in school.
Understandable, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Don Corina, uh, I'm a local guy, I lived here in the district for about seven years. Um, half the children— Half the children last year, they did not learn anything. More than half, I'm going to say ninety percent of the kids, last year was a complete waste. So all you guys up here, you said before, you're here to educate the children, last year was a waste, nobody got educated. All they got was psychological problems and they got physical problems from wearing these masks, okay? I see everybody up here, okay, I see one, I may be wrong, but I see one mask, that might be an N ninety-five mask. I think you might be wearing one, everybody else, I don't think your masks are doing anything. These, have you seen the kids, what they're wearing to school? They're wearing a piece of cloth, I mean, come on, it doesn't do anything, okay? Nothing. The kid, the teachers, if they wanna teach, the teacher should get vaccinated, okay? They should wear a mask, the kids shouldn't have to wear a mask. They don't have a choice, they have to be in the school, they don't have a choice, the teachers have a choice. So that's what should happen. You wanna put a kid on a school bus, I can understand you tell him, wear a mask to school, when you get to your classroom, take the mask off. Last year, my kids were in school, they did not, they were not allowed to take their masks off. They were told they have certain times, recess, they weren't allowed outside for fresh air. They come home, they can get their mask off one time for five minutes all day long, that is not healthy. That is not healthy. Not one of you can tell me that these kids are not gonna be fucked up for the rest of their lives, freaking. They are losing and losing years of their lives, not learning anything. If you guys represent us, do your job, represent us, okay? Do the right thing, not for us, for the kids, okay? The homeschooling, on the computer, that shit doesn't work. My kid was riding a fucking scooter.
You got children in the audience, please.
I'm sorry, okay, this is why they wanna come up here, because they get hot in it.
I like this passion, but keep the clean.
Okay? My kids are riding scooters around the house on iPad, making a sandwich in the microwave. I'm like, what are you doing? He's like, I'm in class, don't talk to me, I'm like, really? I'm like, you're learning a lot. So to zoom, that doesn't work, okay? And the masks, they don't work either. So let's get our shit together, fight for our kids, please, please.
Ms. Vasquez?
Hello, your name is Tara Grasquez. Um, I have a daughter would like to speak, I mean, I don't think it's constructive, but she would like to tell you all how she feels.
Hi, my name is Kobe Elaster. Uh, Kobe is in third grade and I go to the rally. I don't like the mask and I threw up in my mask. I would like to go to school with a silver mask.
Wanna tell them what your favorite part about school year was this year?
Five years.
Yeah, and what you like to say about this year?
That was pretty good job.
Works half the money, right, don't wanna break it. Thank you, she wanted to to know that before I homeschool her this year, which I still have no clue about, because school starts in a week and we still have no decision made. So now, last week, or whatever the last board meeting was, we were waiting for today, the press conference. And now we're waiting for Suffolk County, and it's just absolutely ridiculous. My daughter is going to third grade and she's had one normal school year, which was kindergarten, that's it. And she's going to the third grade and that's like almost half of her elementary career gone. And I'm not gonna send her another year, the kids are so behind. I don't even know what they're gonna learn this year. Like, our kids have a future and these are the most important years of their lives, they're missing out. And you're leaving us stranded, like, my boss is Googling, like, private schools at work, because he's like, what do you mean they're gonna homeschool? And I'm like, that's not gonna work either. I mean, and then he's like, oh, well, what are they doing? I'm like, I don't know, they still haven't announced. So I've been getting my things together all summer, but I'm still waiting for you guys to make a decision. And you're still just, what, waiting for them to tell you what to do? I wanted to take um a tinfoil hat with me today and take it off here, because, what did I say last time? That FDA approval would be by Labor Day, that's here, right? For sixteen or above. And then, I think it was today or yesterday, Pfizer CEO said the study will be done next month in September for five-year-olds to eleven-year-olds, so then they're able to submit for emergency use. And then that it'll be a uh eligible for that.
Excuse me, excuse me, please.
You guys have to fight for us, okay? The fact that you said that you're fine with masking a six-year-old is insane.
Yeah.
Especially after the last board meeting and the decisions that uh uh. You guys were all unmasked the last board meeting.
Yeah.
And you did the one in June. Like, you're just give, you're you're just ramping up the narrative, like, what's what's that about?
About the chart.
So, a few things. You, what happens if the mask police comes here? Did you guys ever find out, because in June, I asked you what you would do if the mask police showed up, did you guys find out?
There's no such thing.
No, right?
Mr. Vasquez, if you can't, if you can't control yourself, you're gonna have to leave.
Did you guys find out what happened if the mask police showed up at our schools?
What are they?
The mask police that was threatened to show up at our schools, right?
The attorney will have to answer that, what do what do we do if the mask police come?
There is no mask police, I know. Remedies, which the governor and uh York State Department of Health have, are the ones that can go to particular, to cut off funding, they can remove everyone at this table, they could decertify any certified professional who applies that order, and they could close the schools.
Okay.
We don't know for sure that they're going to do those things, right? Those are the options, they're all potentially.
Yeah, and you also said that you guys would fight it out before, which still hasn't happened, you said you were gonna look at it.
You listened, you listened to the attorney give his opinion a few moments ago, that there's nothing to challenge.
There's nothing to challenge.
There's nothing to challenge yet.
Yes. What does that mean? There's no, there's no.
Jean, could you explain it again?
Why didn't you challenge, what about last year, why didn't you challenge it all last year, I'm so confused.
So, we did, we wrote a letter, and you heard what they said.
I'm talking about legal options that Mr. Barshay said that we need to explore.
We just asked, we just asked Mr. Monoski, there are no legal options, right? Now, we have a much better chance if we decide to do what you're saying, and that's to ignore the mandate, if all the districts do it at once. If one district does it, I'm telling you, I guarantee you, they will make an example of us.
I'm glad you brought that up.
They'll make an example of us.
I'm glad you brought that up, because that's my next question. What is the district's protocols when kids show up without a mask on?
Yeah.
And then their parents are called and their parents refuse.
You're asking, what would be there if someone did not abide by school rules? We handle it just like we handle any other situation, administrator would handle it, the parent. The rules have to be abided by.
So if we all send our kids in without masks on, what are you gonna do? If the kids refuse and their parents refuse?
And someone, if if a student uh refused to sit at their desk for the day, and the school has.
So they would be suspended, because this is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, well, we have rules that we have to abide by, so it's it's no different than any other rule.
I know, I'm just, okay. So let's be transparent, let's be transparent, because I'm hearing after the first time, it's suspension, after the second time.
Yeah. I didn't say suspension, I didn't say that.
I'm, well, that's what I'm hear, I'm saying what I'm hearing.
Well, you may be hearing it by the statement.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I wanna know, because this is what I'm hearing, that kids will be suspended. And then CPS will be called if you do it again.
And Vasquez, finish up, please.
That's what I'm hearing, I will, but that's what I'm hearing, league lawyers say that that's options that this district, this district are is exploring. So I wanna know what's gonna happen if I send my kid in without a mask on. Is that true?
Well, I think the one question is, one one, if my child does not follow school rules or the code of conduct, it'll be handled the way it's handled in every situation, where an administrator would call you and handle it.
And what if eighty percent of the children show up without a mask on?
And then how is that handled?
This part, yes.
I'm asking you, is the district exploring that option?
What option?
With the district calling CPS on parents that send their kids in unmasked? Because I'm hearing lawyers.
Are they exploring that option?
I'm asking.
I mean, we are gonna talk about that scenario personally.
Okay, because there's a FOIL request in, if you guys would like to respond for that information.
Thank you.
I would really like to know.
Mr. Vasquez, we just confirmed that we received whatever FOIL request uh she's referring to.
Okay.
Thank you. Tara, when did you send it in, about?
About a week ago.
Thank you.
It didn't come directly from me.
We didn't get that flow, so we did ask them to reset it to my office, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, um, some of you I've met before, some of you I have not. I did not intend on coming up here to speak at all today. Um, I am a mom of three or two and a half by blood, well, two by blood, three, just as much in my heart.
What's your name, ma'am?
My name is Suzanne Bono. Um, this is Savannah, who is going into first grade at Forest Rock. And this, yes, little ninja here is, um, I would love to put her in the pre-k, but I don't even know if I could, because now that mask's on, she's not gonna wear a mask the whole time. And I feel like that's jeopardizing her education. I feel like, yes, this is like a cyclical thing, we're just chasing our tails right now with the mold of what's going on here. I will put out there that I do not agree with the um heckling and the fighting and your people as well. So I just wanna put that out there, that I'm not in agreeance with people yelling at you. Um, I'm just gonna kind of go back to what I said in June. And I do understand that you have very limited power, I do. Um, I think my issue is that it has to start somewhere, correct? Okay, so my thing is, and I said it back in June, and I say it again now. I'm not expecting you, as much as I think we would all like, to wave a magic wand and all of these issues go away. It's not realistic and it's not in your power. And I understand, um, Mr. Krav, what you just said, that one district isn't going to do it. But I would like to assume that the superintendents, you do have your own little group, your own kind of an alliance. But it has to start with one voice, and I'm not saying that Hop Hop needs to declare this openly tomorrow. But why can't we be that one voice? Why can't we be that spark to sit there and say, okay, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen with these vaccines, but I think we all pretty much know it's gonna come down to us. And Dr. Murphy, I am so sorry for the position that you are in, because it is rough and it's gonna get harder. I don't understand why we can all just sit here as a board and then as administrators and say, we're just gonna kowtow, we're just gonna say it's okay. Instead of sitting there and saying, I hear what the people are saying, and I don't wanna be the person that's just a follower. Actually, I don't even think he's over here, because his biological mother is actually screaming at him, because I brought him with me. Um, but I brought him with me as a as a form of leadership. And that's what we're all supposed to be doing. So what I don't understand is why we're just accepting and why you can't say, we can't openly declare anything, we can't openly fight because we don't have the grounds, we can't openly sue yet because we don't have the grounds. But why can't you be the voice? Dr. Murphy, why can't you be the spark? Why can't you sit down with your alliance, with your other superintendents and and get on board? And see if you can get other districts, because guess what, how many are there aligned? How many school districts are there?
Eighty-four.
I'm sorry?
Eighty-four.
Okay, what would happen, what then? What would happen, let's just do the sixty-fourty rule, right? What would happen if thirty-six districts said, screw you, we're not following it, it is not a law and we're not doing it? But my.
Bono, if you could, if you could finish up, please.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that it has to start somewhere. And why can't we be the spark? Why, why can't, do you remember when you did write that letter, how many other districts? Or or last year, we had the best plan during those, in in those circumstances. I I'm pretty sure everyone, by raising hands, how many of you know people from other districts that were jealous of our district last year? Right? Why can't we just at least be that leadership? Why can't we be that role and why can't we be that spark?
Thank you, thank you. Sorry?
I'm genuinely asking, why, why can't we at least promise to do that? And promise to sit down with other superintendents and see who we can get on board with it?
Thank you.
That's not an answer, though.
We can, of course, we're gonna continue, we're gonna continue to advocate the way we advocate, the way we've been advocating. We're doing our best, we need help, we need parents not to come here and remind us what we already know, but to petition the people that can actually make those decisions. We need that help from you, it starts with you, it doesn't start with us, it starts with you and us as parents.
I I I agree and I understand that, I just think that you're just.
Thank you. Ms. Bono, I I let you go over, please, thank you so much. Anyone else have anything to say? No, no.
Uh, no, no, I'm gonna speak for all the parents that signed this, I forgot to say it.
Alright, you have, you have one, you have one, you have one minute.
Actually, no, she's gonna take five minutes.
Tara. It doesn't work that way. Tara, just just say what you have to say.
I know, but my husband needs to.
Okay, we as parents sign waivers, waiving the district liability notarized waivers of any liability regard regarding COVID
Okay.
if our kids go to.
Can you pass, pass them up to the clerk, please?
Can I finish my sentence first before I pass it up? Like, you guys.
You're done speaking now, you're done speaking now, you're done speaking now, Ms. Vasquez, you're done speaking now.
Okay, thanks, just reminding you guys, you guys are elected by us, you guys don't want us here.
Ms. Vasquez. You're being disruptive, I'm gonna ask you to leave, I'm asking you to kindly hand these up. Thank you.
It's gonna be a rough election for all of you guys, right?
Anyone else, um, yes, Ms. Kravom?
Is there a bathroom here somewhere, am I allowed to ask that? Thank you. So I'm standing here listening to everybody speak, we're all educated here, we're all community members. What do I feel? That our kids didn't learn anything last year. That is nonsense, and that's a high insult to our teachers. Our kids did learn, and we had a board up here that gave a year like no one else had, we made the news for it. So I don't want my kids wearing masks either. But we have to come together and start questioning one of the administrators, why is he's wearing a mask? You know what, it's none of your business, that's the answer. If he wants to wear a mask, he can wear a mask, who has the right to ask? We all just said, hey, if you're.
We're gonna be respectful to the board we speak.
It doesn't matter if someone wants to wear a mask, that's what we agree, right? If a kid wears a mask, we're not gonna question that. Well, you're the role models, and what did you do to this guy? You're asking, I'm sorry, gentlemen, asking.
For two weeks, it wasn't.
It's not the point, the point is, don't ask him. If he wants to wear a mask, if he wants to wear a face, who cares?
I'd like to ask more, I'd like to ask more, right?
Another thing, then you call him insane?
Yeah.
You call him insane, you disrespect the teachers.
Who are they, Tom?
No, they're not, Tom, but they educated our kids unlike you think they are.
Sir, I'm serving. Ms. Kravom? Alright, we're not gonna go back and forth, Ms. Kravom. I I understand, right? Ms. Kravom.
They led.
Address the laws, don't get.
Hey, alright, listen, we're gonna take a break if we can. Alright.
We can get together.
Make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Seventy, or we're adjourned for five minutes, thank you. Thank you. We're still on the public portion, public comment portion of the meeting. Would anyone else like to comment or question anything related to the district whatsoever? Yes?
Hi, Kevin DiCuddy, Hop Hop High School teacher, president of the HTA. First and foremost, last year, we had the courage to come back five days a week, probably one of opening four or five districts in Long Island was able to do that. Couple things I don't agree on, and I'm not here to battle you guys, definitely not. Because I have, I have three kids, two are going to Ward, one's at Ward Level High School, and I don't want either of them to be wearing masks. But I also don't want them to have their education disrupted in the way... The real battle right now, and I think people are missing the point, the quarantine rules are set up that if you aren't wearing masks as a teacher, I'm gonna have a flow of kids in and out of my room weekly that I can't educate and do my job. To me, that's gonna be a problem as a teacher. As a parent, that's gonna be a problem for my kid in school when he has to be home for eight days and try and learn, you know, Algebra II, whatever he's taking this year. So that's definitely a concern as a parent and also as a teacher. The other thing is, I think they've said it a lot, that this board has courage to make tough decisions, to fight the good fight, but a lot of things have to unfold here. The governor just took power mandates, there is no mandate right now, it's really just a press conference. So the mandate has to be written, it has to be put out, and there's some debate whether or not she has the power to give the authority to the Suffolk County Department of Health or all the department healths throughout the state to apply that handy. But the real battle you guys gotta get to is, my son was playing lacrosse last year at Ward Level High School. I didn't want them to have to be tested every week like the other two sports. We organized parents, and we had about four hundred to eight hundred parents willing to go on a Monday afternoon at four o'clock to picket in front of the Denison Building. That's where you need to change. So I'm a personal friend of Rob Trotter, who's a legislator, and I was calling him constantly. He's like, "Listen, you can call everybody you want, you're gonna talk to the secretaries, it's gonna be meaningless." You need to get people in front of them and you need to get picket. So if that's what you really wanna do and to stop the vaccine that's coming down to your children, you need to be out, not on a Tuesday night and parading the Hop Hop Board of Education. You need to get out on a Tuesday afternoon in front of the Denison Building and getting those people there, getting their attention, because that's the only way you're going to make change. Screaming and yelling tonight does not make change. And it may make you feel better, that's fine. And I give them a lot of credit for taking it, but at some point, like, these are not paid positions. In other states, these positions are paid. The state of Florida, they have paid board members that are elected officials that run and they get paid stipends to be there. These guys are not paid, could probably lose money by being here. And listen, I've battled all of them, I've been, you know, but that's part of my job, that's part of their job. We need to unite together. And here's the other thing, I'm gonna be honest with you. Every district, every unit is split down the middle. And I know, I know you don't think it's true, but, you know, the district did their own tally and they had the teachers. We also did our own tally. And our own tally was basically split down the middle. Fifty percent for masks, fifty percent with a combination of two groups up together because it's kind of mask optional, or masks were taken off when they were three feet apart. But it was about fifty-fifty. And that's where it is across Long Island. I talked to many presidents, I'm on lots of lists, sir, and that's the biggest problem for the union presidents because we can't, no matter what decision we push for, there's fifty percent of our members that are unhappy. And what these guys are saying is that that's fifty percent of the community that's gonna be unhappy either. So we have to unite together and find some common ground, but most importantly, you need to get together and fight the right people. They don't make the laws, they have to follow them. And asking them to stand up, yeah, they may be ready to throw in the towel and say they can be removed because the first person they're gonna remove are the board members for allowing it to happen, they're gonna be gone. And you may think that's easy, but stepping in their role is not easy. It's not easy. It's not easy. And our district would be in disarray for a very quick, like overnight it would be in disarray. And before we got stability back, which is what we've gained in the last five years, we'd take a long time to get back. So I don't wanna see board members change over overnight. To me, that would be a crazy situation because that would be the first thing the state would do. Is this the easiest thing? They're not paid positions. They're elected officials and they'll be able to put new officials in and they'll appoint people to run the board and the kitchen for a period of time until they're able to run elections again. And then other people have to step up. So I give them a lot of credit for what they stand for because they do know that, you know, we were one of those districts that came out and wrote a letter last year. We also, we didn't have really a case in like two weeks in Hop Hop. It was towards the end of the year, it was hot. Our kids were struggling in school wearing masks, and let's be honest, most of them weren't wearing it properly. So we wanted to see smiles, we joined together, we wrote a letter. The start of this school year is much different than last year. Like, my thought process is the vaccine is not working because we're in the summer. This is the point when a respiratory, respiratory virus should not be rising, it should be declining because we're outside because vitamin D helps and the sun gives you that. Well, we have seventy percent of New Yorkers vaccinated. You throw in another like myself who had COVID that have natural immunity, now you look at eighty, eighty-five percent. We should be accomplishing herd immunity easily and it's not. We're starting the school year at four percent, where last year we started, I think it was point one-two percent. So we do have problems because the one thing I don't wanna do is have kids in front of me for two days and then eight kids being taken out of the room because they're surrounding, we're sitting near a kid that tested positive. And that's what's gonna happen. We didn't have a positive case in Hop Hop, I think, until the end of October, beginning of November. I think we're gonna have positive cases in Hop Hop the first week of school. And that's gonna present a problem for you guys because the kids are gonna have to go home and we're all on masks. So there is like a give and a take for it. And one of the things you really need to look at is like the quarantining rules that are tied to masking. I don't make them, I mean, the department now. It's the CDC, they follow the CDC recommendations and stuff, but... But these are things you have to ask your county legislators, these are the things that you have to go and get to your state representatives. And it's not just a phone call, you literally have to go there. Phone calls, when you call, I'm sorry, you're going to talk to the secretaries, you're gonna talk to the intern, and they're gonna pass the message along which never gets it, you gotta go and see them, sorry, thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Yes?
Hi, I'm Catherine Collins. I just have a quick observation. I was, along with everybody else, I was very surprised with the results of the survey. And I was mostly surprised that it was sparring between the mask question and the question about where do you want control to be? Because I feel like if you want masks, you're listening to people that are telling you, recommending it to you. If that's eighty-one percent, and then people that don't want masks are forty-six percent. The real reason I'm concerned about this is because I had to email Dr. Murphy when I answered the question for one of my sons, my husband answered one, I answered the other. When I answered the question about masks, it was the way that it was worded and it confused me. And I didn't realize until about a half hour later, I had answered in a way I did not want to answer. I emailed, I didn't sleep that night, I emailed Dr. Murphy and he deleted my son's survey and then gave you anyone that I was able to answer correctly. But I can't help but feeling the way that second question was answered, that happened a lot. That had to have happened a lot. There's no other explanation for eighty-one percent of people not wanting local control. There's no other explanation for that. And I don't know where we go from here, but it's just, sorry, okay?
No, nice to meet you.
Yes, thank you, thank you for your help.
Um, well, I think local control, both groups could be looking for local control. Depends on what, so what's definition of local control is, right?
But I am confused as to why people that were listening, the ones to the AOH and the CDC, of why they would want local control. What would have mattered to them? If people want local control, they want, when we heard local control, we were so happy. We want almost a local control. But obviously, we're not getting it. But I feel like the sparring between those answers really is concerning me. Because I don't want everybody to believe your time thinking, well, we said of our community we want the masks for the kids or something. Don't think that's the case. It might be, but I really don't think that's the case.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from anyone related to the community, related to the district?
Hi, I'm Angela Arguto. I got three kids in Forest Row.
Yes, I'm sorry, your name again?
Angela Arguto.
Hi Angela.
My question has to do with the testing. What are the procedures? Last year, a lot of kids were being sent home with a headache and they had to be tested. My kid, you know, had a test and, oh, I gotta send my baby trying to get out, taking this test. And I gotta take them home, I gotta bring all of my kids out of school, get the test done. It's just, what's the procedure of this year?
As a current understanding, so because that would be the issue this year, we are not going to send home all the siblings, track down the family members. The only person who would go home is a child who will stay for the days not for the well, that's a significant. That child, if they're positive, then the family would be close contacts. But to answer your question short, they're not sending the issue.
All right, and what are the criteria that, you know, you're gonna send the kids home? I know there was a list last year if you had these symptoms that you had, they had it on.
Yeah, I think the symptoms would be consistent with symptoms that are consistent of COVID. We provide that with the parents, to the parents who are in the street. But lately also, the governor indicated some clarification for schools related to some of this, so we may have a more specific understanding.
Yeah, because a headache is like, be anything, be dehydration.
Yeah, our goal is to keep the kids, to get the kids in school. The first question of our survey related to the belief system of having kids in school, onsite learning, and everyone, of course, agreed with that. So that's our mantra, is to have the kids in school and to keep them there. Some ways, because it could be more prescriptive with the quarantine guidance now, I think we can do just that, so that's a good reason. And let me just say, our other mantra is back to normal as much as possible. One of the things we're fortunate to have here in Hop Hop, all of our classrooms are air conditioned. The board is consistently supporting small class sizes at the elementary level. We're gonna be, you know, spreading out desks so to avoid some of the close contact status. We're looking to avoid that at all costs. We have clubs again, we're using lockers again, you know, kids are allowed on the buses where we can have field trips again. So we're looking to be back to normal and have our kids thriving.
Are you guys still given the option for the parents to drop off instead of coming to Hop Hop?
Uh, yeah, I mean, each building has their own drop-off rules, but the truth is, back to normal pre-COVID. back to normal pre-COVID would mean less of that if possible, so that the buses can perform like they've always done in the past with the kids on the bus, because we ended up adding some time at the beginning and end of the day for that process, so we wanna be back to normal as much as possible. Even last year, we had to like stagger the beginning week of the year of the year, because it was so uncertain. This year, it's like all kids they want, right? So where we need to be back to normal, we're doing that, and it's really across the board.
One other thing on masking, I know somebody had brought up baby doing like the restaurant approach. Maybe that's another thing that we can consider, or maybe push for, or ask questions about, write letters about.
Meaning when you're sitting next to them?
When you're sitting, take them out, or put them on, and maybe in the hallways. They gotta put them on, but just something to keep the mask off as much as possible if we end up having to do it.
Yeah, just one other thing is, when the students are outside, the guidance system, they don't have to wear masks, so we're looking to increase those opportunities as well. Again, supported by the board. We were headed tents last year, we're gonna look to have more spaces outside, we're gonna look to, where possible, increase recess. So we're looking at all ways to have students within the parameters allowed to us to have masks on.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from anyone?
Just real quick, I'm not gonna curse. I heard you guys got like, I think you said like $4 million for COVID. Did, was any of that, or could any of it be put towards filtration systems in the schools?
And it is.
And so because?
Yeah, Mr. Rosati, who's our facility's director, is, a big chunk of it is going to H-back improvements. Some were made already last year, but this is not my area of expertise, but he's getting care of purifiers for every classroom, so there's a lot of work being done.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from anyone? Something related to the district? Yes?
I just wanna say thank you to everyone, it's a pleasure to be here and all your hard work. But I just have one final question, which is my concern. What is the, is there an offer, if COVID for children is less deadly than flu, we know all these measures are not sort of forever, what's the offer?
We don't, we don't know. We don't know the answer. We don't know. Yes?
Is it not match related, is the comments back for the high school? Are they still sitting at desks and doing that push-up lay-down?
Comments?
At the lunch, lunch for our high school?
Yeah, we're looking to be back to normal. I don't know the specific answer, but I could tell you that we're back to 93 days, you know. Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead now.
Hi, I just wanted to talk about how I feel with masks from a kid's perspective. I have noticed that me and my friends have been feeling off from the mask, and it makes you feel almost like dizzy and claustrophobic. And we get less, we get socialized less because of all the distancing, and you don't get as many activities or experiences as you normally would in an adult year. And it's been happening for about a year and a half, and a lot of kids have missed out on big trips.
Thank you for sharing what, what your community, unless you wanna share your personal?
Uh, yeah, I'm Phil by Maggie.
Great, thank you for sharing. This year, we're looking at clubs back, sports, all the traditional activities, field trips, right? So we hope it's gonna be a year that you log within the traditional sense. Thank you for sharing, it's great.
Any other questions or comments?
Hi, I'm Julia Rafa, and I'm here to represent my mom who's been the mainstay because she's been with us for a few past years. I'm now going into sixth grade, and she'll be here right now if she can speak. I think it's really unfair that we have to wear a mask. It's my body, my choice. We shouldn't have to wear it. If you wanna wear it, you can, but if me and my friends don't wanna wear it, we can't go against her. And it's a free country, and that's taking away our rights. So I think we shouldn't wear a mask.
Thank you, thank you. Any further questions or comments?
I'd like to start with a great quote I saw today.
Let's think your name here, we know you, but just the wrong.
My name is Lori, I wanna thank the board for still letting me talk. This is the third meeting I've been to, and you guys always have heard us out, and I do wanna thank you guys. And I know that you guys did this all voluntarily, and you managed to channel us, and you listened to very different opinions, and I do appreciate you guys hearing us and not putting time on it, and thank you guys. And you guys are working hard for us.
You're fine, man.
Okay, so I actually started writing quotes today, I'm gonna start off with this before I talk about what I wanted to talk about. "The government will never bomb areas with the lockdowns because, but not the lockdowns, there is no state of emergency. Without a state of emergency, experimental vaccines are not allowed. If the vaccines are not allowed, they will not be unable to justify digital passports and impose total control over us. Therefore, in five, we'll lose billions of dollars. It's about money." I would like to point out on the CDC website also, it says for the PCR test, it cannot tell the difference between comical, flu, or sneezy maintain. There's a lot of controversy with this. How are we testing positive if the PCR test is not actually effective? We are using it to base our data. How is that effective, and how are we coming to terms with that? When people should take three tests and have two different results, positive, negative, positive, and just keep going back and forth? We are changing our lives for it. I would, with me too, I'd like to have us all stand together. Teachers are being forced to get vax now and not even allowed to test out. We're not gonna be getting that option. How many teachers are you gonna be willing to lose?
Lori, what are you basing that on? It's obviously.
New York City. New York City said that they are.
You're teaching, you're not teaching this.
No, I'm not, but they said it's coming for us next.
Gotcha.
So at what point do you stand up? I've been standing up this whole time, and I've been trying to rally. Now more people are coming to it because now that they see it in New York City, it's a matter of us.
And the governor said today there will be a test out or an opt-out for teachers, but...
It actually was quoted saying for now. It was not actually said permanent, it was for now.
Yep.
So at what point do the rest of the teachers support New York City teachers? I think it's really sad. Are you guys gonna be willing to fire a teacher who does not comply with it? If teachers have a choice of vax or test, who's gonna pay for that? What time? Are you gonna be paying teachers here personal time for it? Is it gonna be an hourly rate for that test, as it's going on for them? What happens when a teacher doesn't comply? Are you willing to lose that teacher? Because I can tell you, most of the teachers who are unvaxxed and fighting for it are the ones that were fighting for five days a week. They're the ones that are fighting for in-person versus the other teachers who wanna go remote at the drop of a hat comes to mind. So when you have all those teachers left, be prepared to go remote most of the time, because they're gonna be the ones first trying for it. So your teachers that are fighting to be not vaccinated, your teachers are, those are the ones fighting to be in-person. Something Tara said, I did have them here myself, and I did realize that she foiled. I did hear that behind closed doors, that there's talks of suspending students who will not comply with masks. I also heard that CPS was mentioned, that after the second time CPS. I would like to know officially on the record, is there any truth or any discussion at all to that? Or is it just a rumor? This way we can pull the rumor, if it's a rumor.
I'll answer if you stop for a second. I'm not aware, the board has. Oh, yeah, I still don't. The board has not had any discussion.
Okay, that's a rumor as of now.
To the extent that, to the extent that the rumor was that the board was discussing those things, it's completely untrue.
Okay, because you know me, I will go straight there, and I wanna know if something's true or fact, so now that I know that it's not true, that's great. But it's on the record that it is not true. Several districts abandoned together. I'd like to know why we haven't officially joined massive people stuff. I was here last time, and I asked how many people would put in money? I think we can get 75,000 immediately for a retainer, for a lawyer. If it's not our district lawyer, another district thing, how can we get onboard with COMAC and massive people in the other districts? So we are officially saving it, and we're gonna go down fighting as much as we can, because we cannot stand alone. But if we do stand with the other districts, we do have a better thing. It's about money. They cannot knock us all down, I'm sorry.
It's all right, Lori, what are you gonna do, I'm curious, your district? If they...
My head is still in the same with my district. I contacted my union president yesterday, and I'm awaiting knowledge. They said they have a meeting. I'm on a summer break, I have no clue what's going on there at all.
So if they come down with a mask, or saying they're going to follow the mask mandate, teachers not to get tested or vaccinated, what are you gonna do?
I'm willing to get tested, I think the line of sanctity will be best. I think that's when I will have to check out, at that point. It's sad, it's scary.
Has your district said what they're doing yet, or they're...
No, they have not, and as of Long Island, it's not right now, but I immediately contacted my union president, and she said she does not have any information. As you guys know, I fought for masks last year, I fought for masks for students, and I was written up twice in sports and districts on this.
All right, we told us that, yeah.
So I've been fighting this for over a year, I'm not new to this bandwagon. So I know there's consequences. I think my line of sand is, I'm not taking that poison in my body. I don't trust it, it's not long-term. There are so many still, and I wanna know facts, and I will try to get things. I heard that it wasn't even fully approved, that it's a switcheroo of a different brand, so I'm trying to find out, is there truth to that? Because unfortunately, there's so much misnomer on both sides. But I'm like, wait a minute, is there something that, I was reading that it's actually a different version of it that's not actually released yet? So I'm trying to find out from doctors themselves of it, so I don't know how true it is. But just the fact that with all the smog and mirrors, people are jumping on every bandwagon with the media, so if the media says it has to be true. Who's actually thinking about what is, reading the paperwork, so doing it? Just like they said, well, the Department of Health is naming something. That's not an actual mandate, and if we're not in a state of emergency, there cannot be a mask mandate. So I'm just trying to find out the truth and legality, so we know how to fight this. And I'll put my money where my mouth is. I will go do the fundraising and stuff, so we can have the lawyer, so our children have the right to breathe. We also wanna know about sports. We have football players here, we have baseball players here, asking about their sports. What is that looking like? Because they don't wanna get vaxxed either, and are they gonna have to lose out when their sports come home?
So let me get an answer to that question. You're asking about kids and sports, whether there's going to be testing. Do we know the answer to that yet?
I don't have the answer, I mean, like, all sports are proceeding.
Right, I don't believe the various sections have said that there's gonna be any mandatory testing. Whether that changes or not, or whether the governor changes that or not, we don't know.
Does the governor actually have the right to change that if there's no state of emergency?
I haven't the slightest idea.
Oh, that's honest, that's an honest answer there, because I don't know if nobody's even asked that.
No, people, people, they asked it, believe me. You know, as a lawyer, that's not my, that's not my bag, I don't do that type of law, and I don't know the answer, but, you know, it's something that we're going to have to address for sure.
Because they're running out of space.
Lori, can you just finish up if you don't mind?
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
I was gonna say, they're running out of space, and now it's getting scary. You can only give so many free hamburgers and cokes and free drinks to get a vax. What's gonna happen next, and what's gonna be happening to our children? And the teachers too, don't forget, because you might be losing good teachers by enforcing it. Has the board actually discussed what will happen if a teacher doesn't comply? Has it been...
Well, we don't even know what comply with what, that's the question right now. Mr. Giacchetti already addressed it, but we don't even know what the requirement's gonna be yet.
Okay.
But that's really a question that we're gonna have to work with Mr. Giacchetti's unit. Obviously, it's very important for us, we love our teachers, we think our teachers are great. They were in the battle with us last year. We want them all here, we don't want anyone to lose their job because of this, so whatever it is, we're gonna work.
That was a great speech the president gave before, I thought that was such a fair and great speech that he gave before.
He's behind. There he is.
I thought that was a great speech he gave.
All right, Lori, thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Yes? Hi.
I'm Kristy Bonner. I have two kids in the pines. My question is, if, when we, if one of them gets COVID, my oldest has COVID last year, and he has quarantined for 14 days.
Yeah.
And then my youngest was in kindergarten, and their whole class entered quarantine. There was a virtual option, so you saying that there's no virtual option at all? So then what does the attendance, are you gonna mark my kids absent for 10 days?
Yeah, so I think there's some nuance there, so a dedicated virtual option in terms of someone staying home for the whole year, and we're offering a dedicated one option, does not exist. In terms of what we do with quarantine situations, we're talking about how to handle that learning experience through a version of HPI. So we are gonna figure something out there. And I don't know if we hit earlier, but in terms of when there's siblings and one has to go home with a symptom, if it's, last year, we were sending everybody home. We don't believe we have to do that same process this year. If they then get COVID, there's certain contact tracing rules that the Department of Health takes care of, and defines as a close contact, which is known with the family.
Okay.
Thank you, Kristy Bonner. Thank you. Very, very quick, we got, yeah.
So last year, what we, at this point, you guys have done the Plexiglas last year?
Yes.
What was it that spurred that change on? Do we have anything like that in place now this year, or would we do?
But we don't have Plexiglas at all this year.
Well, no, I know that, but I mean, there was something with the number, there was a reason why you guys have to take that.
Yes, so at one point, we provided the barriers, because we were told that was an acceptable mitigation strategy. Then guidance came out from the CDC that says, that said they were not affected, and at that point, we took them down, like other districts.
Okay, so I know they were still putting plans in place, so the CDC at this point, the only thing they recommended as a mitigation strategy is our masks? Or that's just our governor that recommended that?
A social distancing mechanism.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment period. We have executive session tonight, which will begin at, it's nine fifty, thank you, 9:55. I'll take a motion to adjourn, go into executive session to discuss the appointment of a particular person, as well as a supervisor from legal counsel. I'll take the motion, Mr. Screeter, second to any discussion. Close of favor. Seven zero, executive session will begin in five minutes. Thank you all for coming tonight.